I'd like to call this April 2nd Council Work Session to Order. Before we get started this evening, Mr. Catroci would like to introduce to us and have her say a few words, the new CEO of Lower Bux Hospital. So Louis, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay. Prime Healthcare Services has recently appointed Kelly Flora as the new CEO of Lower Bux Hospital. Kelly joins the Lower Bux Hospital from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, where she served as an in-house consultant in operations and strategic development. Prior at the Children's Hospital, Kelly worked at St. Christopher's Hospital for children in Philadelphia, where she was the chief operating officer. Previously, Kelly worked for the Memorial Hospital of Salem County in Salem, New Jersey, chief operating officer and facility compliance officer. Earlier in her career, Kelly worked at West Hills Hospital and Medical Center in West Hills, California. Kelly earned her Masters of Health Services Administration and Bachelor of Business Administration from the George Washington University in Washington DC. She is a fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives and a recipient of Regions Award. We're happy to have Kelly's experience and energy here at Lower Bux Hospital. The Bristol community welcomes Kelly, and we pledge our continued support to this fine hospital. Kelly, would you like to say a few words?
Well, first of all, thank you very much. I'm sorry you had to sit through that long introduction, but I really appreciate the invitation, and it's my pleasure to be here. I, just a little bit more about me, because the professional just gives one side, but I live down in South Philadelphia right now. I've got a husband, a dog, two little girls. I'm originally from upstate New York, Finger Lakes region, Corning area, so very much still love that area and getting back to it. But I've been in the Philly area now for about 10 years. I was telling some people earlier, Herb actually, that started out as an EMT and would run calls as an EMT for about six years down in Washington DC. So even before I got into hospital administration, the pre-hospital environment was where I found my most comfort zone, and was always very excited to be serving the patients and the community down there. I am thrilled to be a part of this community and this hospital. I really enjoyed the last, now, three weeks of getting to meet people and learn about the services there, meet some of the physicians, working on a lot of great activities. There is so much warmth and energy at the hospital. I think the people there are wonderful, our physicians are really quality, and our board are very supportive, and you as a community, we appreciate all the work that you have, bringing your family to our hospitals so that we can serve you. Looking for any opportunities that you see where we can do things better to make sure that any patients that come through our doors have the best patient experience that they possibly can, given the stress and the difficult nature when you are sick. We want to make sure that we're here for you and can serve you. I have some business cards. I can leave them here with Lou, and certainly didn't know if this is a forum for questions, but happy if that is appropriate, and if not, I can be available, and I'll, looking forward to seeing you, hopefully not at the hospital, but we are here for you if you need us, and if Lou would like me to come back at any point, I'm happy to.
Thank you. I really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open up this side of the room for public participation. Anybody on this side want to speak on anything? Go to the podium and state your name and address.
My name's Tony Ivy. Address is 27 West Railroad Avenue. I'm here, well, I have a long hiatus, so I was doing studies for a few years, so didn't have time to come to the meetings unfortunately, but I recently discovered, verified that the, there's some, our street is a little odd because it used to be an alley. There's three homes on West Railroad Avenue currently. Because it was an old alley, there's the terminology, I think it's called the pull-off off the road, it's still gravel. So I'm requesting if the borough can look into paving the remaining gravel area just in front of the three houses, 2-5, which is owned by the Cullens, 2-7, which is owned by the Ivies, and 99, which is owned by the Lees. If you could pave that, it's approximately 10 by 95 square foot of area. I'd appreciate it.
I'll have the manager come out and look at it and see what we can do.
Thanks, Rob.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Go to the podium. Okay, that ends public participation. Tony, what do you have? You go to the chief.
Two things. One is, last month, we had a house fire on Washington Street that caused significant damage to the basement and the kitchen. Firefighters did a great job because that, that house is part of a, a six-house wood frame row, and they had the potential to be catastrophic if the fire gets up into the roof areas or gets into the walls of being able to spread down that row. So they held it to the one row, actually held it to the basement and the kitchen. We did have two firefighters injured, however. One had a sprained ankle and one had a respiratory issue. They've both been treated and released. And the second thing that I have is, this month, we should have our first meeting of our State Workers Insurance Fund Safety Committee. This will allow us to save 5% on the workers' comp premiums next year. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Herbie? Chief.
Just to thank the committee, we have another, and the manager, we have another substitute crossing guard. It's always helpful to have more of that. She's passed both the, all the requirements and also putting on the agenda for next week. Joseph Dragon to be hired as a part-time police officer, which will be another benefit to us due to a resignation of another officer.
Any questions for the chief? How long can I?
I have something, real quick. I had a request for Monroe Street for the speed monitor sign on the, on the other end where there's a gas station and the pizza places. Thank you. It's a two-way, but what do you think?
I think gun towards Rattler.
You do? I don't know. I can talk to him again and see what he says, and then we'll go from there. I'll go see him tomorrow.
Anything else, Lorraine?
No, thank you.
Okay. Tony, what do you have tonight?
Just one thing. A gentleman was replacing a porch on the 100th block of Buckley Street some months ago. He replaced the sidewalk. However, the contractor that he had dumped the construction debris on our property at Bethan, Buckley. It's been there for some time, and it looks like the job's pretty much completed, but the debris is still there. It looks like they've added to it. There's cement, there's wood, and things like that on our property, so I wonder if we can just send notice to the homeowner to move along and get it cleaned up.
Are they still working there?
No.
Do we have to have the contractor, if he had a permit on file, right?
Yes.
All right, so let's contact him tomorrow. Tell him to clean up the mess, and if not, cite him.
Yeah, I'll give, Mr. Dull and Mr. Dillon the address after the meeting. That's all I have.
Louis? Dave?
Yes, thank you. I did not like being council's verbal punching bag last month, so I'm going to comment on some of the statements that were made towards me. Mr. Tom Carpenter said that he did not see Dave Gerard at the Fields. This statement is true. However, when I was younger, going back to Junior Fields Basketball League, when he could not get enough adults to coach, he would ask a few of us to be player coaches for many years. I did this for him and always appreciated his confidence in me. At the old St. Mark's School before it was tore down, my brother and myself in the auditorium coached the grade school boys for a year or two, teaching them the fundamentals of basketball. When the new school was built, I was the head coach for four years for the 11th and 12th grade through the CYO program, along with Joe Gallagher and Lodge Fraser. Through our efforts, the kids received good basketball skills, team shirts, and transportation. In my college days at the intermural program level, I began player coach for two years. I hope my years as a coach to the Bristol youth is enough to satisfy Mr. Carpenter's concern about my volunteerism. Mr. Pezza made a comment about having full confidence in Mr. Salerno's opinion. I can tell the good people of Bristol that Mr. Pezza has never been on the wrong side of Mr. Salerno. Mr. Salerno belongs to a political group called the Committee to Secure Bristol's Future. Its headquarters are at his office. This group uses its financials, finances to bully candidates that don't fit into that group's mold. Mr. Devine, Mr. Ricchio, myself are not endorsed by the Committee to Secure Bristol's Future. So I think that most people can see why I don't always agree with Mr. Salerno's opinions. Special Counsel Chris Gerber was brought in by the council majority to back up Mr. Salerno. Mr. Gerber has a history with the borough. He was involved in the Weber versus Bristol Borough case, which is a public document, which I have a copy if you'd like to look at it. The Curder Times also wrote an article about it. It was entitled "Sex, Lies, and Scandals: A Real Black Eye for the Borough." All I can say about Mr. Gerber is that he came in as an attorney and he left as a defendant. Mr. De Giuseppe stated that this was his biggest disgrace in 17 years, the fact that Mr. Ricchio and myself, trying to force counsel to make the Polinski contract go out the bid. When I ran for council, people would say, "Dave, I want a clean, safe town at an affordable price." If trying to play fair and trying to save the taxpayer monies is called a disgrace by Mr. De Giuseppe, I would use other words, such as, "It's my job." Mr. Catroci had two comments. One, he is being spoon-fed information from the school board. That statement is not true. I find it insulting that after 40 years of running my own business, that Mr. Catroci would think that I was incapable of making a few simple phone calls to obtain that public information about Polinski's salary with the school. The second statement made by Mr. Catroci was that, "You're a roofer. I would never put down anybody for how they make a living supporting their families. I believe that no matter what your station of life is, everyone has something positive to bring to the table." Since Mr. Catroci and the Committee to Secure Bristol Future seem obsessed with my being a roofer, here's a brochure, if you're a roofer, called Gerard, four years ago. That crap. I would like to give them a little snippet, just six years of my life as a roofer. There are 40 more years, but I'll just give them the first six. At age 20, I started to work with Mr. Jim McGee Senior. Jim was a big man with great giant workhands, but along with his physical presence, he had a sharp mind. Jim was a master tinsmith who knew all the, all the tricks of the trade, and on a daily basis for six years, Jim would explain why this system worked and that system did not, and I paid attention. Through Jim, I got to work with and meet the best people in Bristol and throughout Bux County. Randall Boyle, owner of Boyle's Ice Cream and one-time owner of the King George Inn, Dr. Romano, Dr. Fannin, Dr. McElvan, Shane Ross, Don Patina, Ronnie Deroff, Don Clark, Phil Wixler, Frank Skouria, Frank Bannister, Stan Worthington, Carl Nelson, Glenn Snyder, and the list goes on and on and on. Jim was my mentor and friend. He taught me more than just roofing, and because of him, I've had a wonderful and productive life. I still own and use many of Jim's tools, which I cherish. I still ride around in his old Chevy work truck. I'm here for four more years. I don't appreciate people who really don't even know me taking potshots at me, but I can assure you that I will respond to them. That's all I got.
You got Dave.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Tony, what do you have? I'm not even going to respond.
What can you say? All right, the first thing I have is, the, I know that me and Lorraine have talked about basketball courts, redoing the basketball courts down at the, what we call the old tennis courts where the, where the planters are right now, the basketball court section, and we looked into, you know, different grant opportunities, different ways to bring some money into the borough to support that. I wasn't very successful in accomplishing that goal, whether there's money at, and Ms. Cullen, I don't know if you were, but, I mean, it's not that we've talked about it, but I'm still very much in favor of, you know, producing something on that, in that area for these basketball courts. I think that would be, you know, just great for the borough itself. I mean, the kids are using those courts, even though I think that they're not in the best of shape, but the kids are still using, I would love to be able to really hone in and make that something great for the community. And I was reading the paper, Bristol Township seeks state grants for projects, and one of the grants that they talked about were, there's an application for a $2 million State Department of Conservation and Natural Resources grant, that, you know, that they would have to put into a park and recreation and things like that. So I was just wondering, Mr. Dillon, is this something that we could look into or something that has been brought to our attention that we could possibly fill out and try to get some money to renovate those basketball courts or any other areas of the borough for recreation?
We could file a grant application for improving the basketball courts, if that's what you're...
Yes. And you know off the top of your head, I'm not sure if you do or not, but is there any type of deadline for those types of state grants, or?
The applications are continually available. There are deadlines, but different grants come up during the course of the year.
So I'll reach out to you, probably some more, just to give you a little reminder. The second thing, in our...
I'm almost sure, I was there today, matter of fact, looking at the garden thing with, they needed help with something. I thought the way it was left, we got a price to do that. I forget what it was. I don't know if you remember.
That was off the top of my head.
To mill and overlay it, and it was left that we didn't want to spend, I think you had said you were going to try to see if there's some grant, that you were going to lead that.
Yeah.
I don't know if you applied for anything.
That's what I just said, yeah. No, I mean...
No, you're asking Mr. Dillon, but you had said at that meeting, "I'm going to try to see if I can get some grant money."
Yeah, that's what I just said. I said I wasn't, you know, successful in finding it.
Okay, so if there's something out there, then we'll look for it.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The second thing I brought up was there was a CDA, Continuing Disclosure Agreement. I tried to read through, I didn't understand what it was for, what was the disclosure about, and it was in our packet, but I didn't really know what we were disclosing, or, so I'm sure, Mr. Dillon, you could explain that to me, what that is?
Well, so like the updated agreement, we currently have a, an existing disclosure agreement with the, the firm that loans us money, and with the new regulations and all, they need a updated agreement. Basically, we're signing off, saying that we will, you know, convey all our financial information to them and not hold back, and so it's just a standard agreement.
Okay.
And it's on for council's consideration next Monday at the moment.
Okay, so it's just basically just...
It's just an updated agreement. We already have one, this is an updated one.
Thank you. The next thing is just the Treasury report. There's some things in the Treasury report, just have questions going. There was a line item 17805 for the Hartford Group Benefits, Employee Medical Benefits, and there's nothing in there, there's a blank. I don't know if that was just a misprint or something that didn't go in there.
It was, check was in essence voided, there was no amounts.
The next one, Mr. Salerno, there was a bill and error for 13,000, close to 14,000, $13,955, which seemed a little higher than most of the ones that you were saying. Is there a reason why that one is 14,000 or close to 14,000 for this month?
Well, it's not for this month. I believe it's for, what would that be, June?
January?
Yes, January. Now, remember, you know this, part of that is the...
The court.
My invoice is for the sewer authority. She just doesn't break them down. Part of that is my invoices for the land development subdivision, which the borough doesn't pay. But my invoice for the borough general account was higher that much because I was in Doylestown like five times for different litigation. But what you should know, one of those litigations, the court ordered the defendant to reimburse the borough for my costs and my attorneys' fees, so the borough actually received a check for about $20,700. So, yeah, that, that was unusual because there was a lot of litigation. I think last month's bill for the general account may have been $6,000.
Okay. I was just wondering, I was just...
Sorry, your mic was off. I didn't get anything on TV. Your mic was off. I didn't get anything.
They didn't miss anything.
Another line, we have Analytical Laboratories, Inc. I guess that was, I don't know if we were, whatever we were testing was for $21.25. I was just wondering, what would we be testing?
For the sewer plant. Discharges into the...
And then, two other ones. We have a business card and a business card service for bills of like 17, 17.35, and then, well, 49, it doesn't really matter, but I was just wondering, and it says, Dynamic Media Wharf. I don't know what that is. The line number is 17850.
Which one is it?
It's 178...
Can I see it?
Yeah.
Business card.
Yeah, Wharf.
That's our credit card, and that's one of the charges. I don't know what it is unless I pull out the credit card.
Okay, all right. There's something that I can ask for.
Yeah, anytime you want to stop in, we'll pull...
Yeah, I know, I was just doing it today, so. All right, and then the next one is CBM of Delaware Valley, operating supplies and materials. It's for $9,674.25, and it just adds to the, the $15,000 that we had last month that went to the CBM account. So it's close to 25,000, so if you could, I would like to have anything with CBM to be kind of broken down, the invoices, not just kind of a general, but just specifically, what is, what is this money going towards? I know we talked about it earlier, about getting a breakdown, so if you could just add that next $96.74 onto that list, so I can get a breakdown of...
Yeah, we have those invoices available. I think Angie's pulled them and waiting for you to stop by.
Oh, okay.
So you can see which ones you want copies of and all.
Okay, perfect. And, that's it, so I have for today, thanks.
Just a few things. One of the things that Mr. Devine mentioned about the basketball courts, I know that, you know, and we would probably need someone more qualified than myself or Mr. Devine or Lorraine, that the Sixers actually have a program for revitalizing basketball courts. They typically focus in on obviously communities of need, and I don't know what the qualifications are for that, but might be something to consider, getting someone that is experienced with grant writing to reach out to them.
There's Tommy Corbin.
See if you've got connections with the Sixers? So anyway, just a thought with the Sixers there. Chief, maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Dillon, I'm not exactly sure. When the meters, when there's a, when there is a broken meter, how is that handled or dealt with by the person that writes tickets? Like, are, is there a system that just says this, like, that they know which ones are broken and which ones aren't? Because there are a few on Mill Street that are, that are not operational.
We have open communications back and forth with Mr. Waldron on what's going on on a daily basis.
Because I, some of them read, like, obviously failure or whatever, and that, and that, that's great, because I think obviously whoever's writing tickets will see that. There's a few, though, I know, that literally take orders, Dillon.
She seems to be pretty up on which ones. It's kind of interesting how well she knows.
Okay.
And we've had a couple of people where we've actually avoided tickets because we know that.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then, much, I think that...
Just add, there are numbers on each of those meters, so if you're aware of any numbers...
Just like a light post.
Send us an email or a text or whatever, and we'll have yours check them out.
Got it, thank you. Lorraine, myself, and I would guess a lot of you guys, because it's not unique just to Harriman, but it is, is something that I think we all have been even getting used to at 3 o'clock in the morning now, are the, the horns from the railroad station that has been, I mean, just incessant and unbelievable over the last couple of weeks. Merle, I know we had brought this up last time, and you had said that, you know, you had had some conversations with some people. Is there any update on your, from your perspective on that?
Greg, just to let you know is, Merle, I was just going to bring Greg up to date on a, a meeting that I scheduled today.
Okay, I was, go ahead.
Basically, we talked to Congressman Fitzpatrick today.
Yeah, I had a conversation with him this morning.
He's setting up a meeting Thursday with you and Lorraine?
Yeah. I talked to him about 8 o'clock this morning.
Okay, right.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was something different from Merle's perspective, that's why.
I don't know if Merle has anything to add, but we did schedule a meeting.
Okay, yeah, I talked, I talked to Congressman Fitzpatrick this morning about a different matter, and then we started talking about this, and he had said that he was going to call Amtrak, he was going to call Conrail, and at least try to get us some answers, in sofar as, I know what Merle had said was that the idea was that they have to blow their horns when they're going through the construction zone, which totally makes sense, I get that. I don't think anyone would say that that's a bad idea. I just think it's, at this point in time, I think people just want to know, how much longer is this going to be going on, and can we get some info about that?
They're moving sections. They're down now in Bristol Township, but it's all down.
Yeah.
There's a few pieces, it's sitting over here yet, by the tree station, but they're the last of the line. But the bad news is, they're going to Philadelphia when they get done this rerail, and then they're going to come back.
The other side, yeah.
Right.
It's not done yet.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Well, I just, you know, I just wanted to make it clear that Congressman Fitzpatrick is now very well aware of, I mean, he's been, but he's very engaged in it now, very willing to help us from our conversation that we had this morning, so that's all I have, and I know, I do know though, I'm sorry, it's not all I have, some of the people that have historically had the same issues in Harriman about the idling, they believe that it's back with vengeance. You know, I don't know if you have a perspective on that as well.
Yeah, they may have it for a short period of time now, only because some of that equipment was out on the track, and when they're done switching, they have to get over to this side, and they sit in the yard until they get the okay from New York to go back out on the main. And when they do that, they have to blow the horn, so. And they're, they're probably sitting there for a good, maybe hour or so, waiting to go back.
Is that typically a certain time of day?
It can be any time, really, whenever. They have, they have crews really to work around the clock, you know, necessarily, you know, chemical companies, lumber yards during the day, and then they go out to the... the day, and then they go out to the, uh, industrial park, Youngwood Airport Bridge.
And that's, and so one is related to the other at this point in time, though. I mean, the, the additional idling is related to the construction work that's currently going on?
Yeah, if it keeps up after the trains are well out of the area, then we'll have to call and talk to the yard master in New Morrisville.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anything else, Greg?
Nope.
Lorraine?
Well, Greg took my horn blowing, so that's good. Um, I just wanted to say it was really nice on Saturday to see, uh, the weather was nice and people were out raking and sweeping and, um, it was just a nice day. And I can't wait for more of those beautiful days to come. Have a nice week.
Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. On the items for consideration for Monday, uh, Chief Henry Mo- mentioned about the hiring of Joseph Dragon as a part-time police officer. I think that would be a, a great move for us to continue to improve upon the number of officers that we can put out there. Also too, in your packet was a, uh, a packet from Chief Henry concerning the cameras that he's been working on his project, I guess about six or seven months now, talking about the cameras inside the police station. Um, in your packet, talks about headquarters, uh, cameras and access control. We're to a point now where the software, you can't get, the cameras, you cannot replace, you know, they've, they're at the end of use. So we need to do something.
I didn't want to, there was something that I, when I read that, I wasn't sure if that was something that we were going to talk about in open, you know?
Well, I didn't want to go too far about
Okay, all right.
what's in there. That's why I'm-
Okay, gotcha.
You know, um, but it's something that, it's not in the, uh, in the budget. So it would be a capital expenditure. But all three items need to be done, but the chief has prioritized what our needs were, and it's getting the police station, um, modernized again and them working on the cameras outside of the building. So it's something that council's going to have to look at.
We already put it in our budget, so it's, it's not in the police budget-
Right.
-in the capital improvement budget. The only thing I like to say is make sure that when we do it this time, it's done the right way. So, I mean, we're putting a lot of faith in spending this kind of money into whoever you guys are talking. I have no idea.
We're using the same company that the skating rink used. That's the second company we brought in to, to look. First company was about fifty-nine thousand, I think is this, thirty-two thousand. Seems that the skating rink is very happy with their cameras and their, the system that they purchased. Uh, the, the challenge with this, Ralph, is its electronics. These are about ten, eleven, twelve years old. So there's been so much new generation, if these companies aren't even in business anymore either. But, uh, in the packet, it's about a fourteen-page report. You can see the prices. And if you have any questions, the chief and I would be more than happy to meet with you.
Well, does anybody have any questions? Or does this have to be voted on as a bu- since it's in the budget or no?
I have it, I have it proposed to be on your agenda next Monday.
Right.
I mean, I ha- I have some questions, but I think they're more specific to us meeting, you know, an executive session real quick, just, you know?
You're talking about locations?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow. I don't think we're going to find out where to put him.
No, 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 not that. I'm just talking about in general of, like, any idea, well, I don't even want to talk about it.
Right.
All right. Well, you could talk to the chief.
Okay.
And then the, the other thing is I, I pointed out what, what Herbert brought up. I want to thank him for the work that he's done with the, uh, with the fire chiefs and the, uh, safety committee in getting that organized, uh, to look at, it's, it's not only to reduce the overall workman's comp insurance by, uh, five percent, but it's also to get us to look at, you know, if there's injuries or if there's problems. At our last fire board meeting, uh, chief and I had some concerns about, we had two injuries a month and a half ago. We just had two injuries. So we had a, you know, a discussion about what are we doing? Are we do- are there things that we should be doing? Those kind of things, focusing on is safety of the, uh, the individual firemen. So that's about it. Thank you.
Have any questions on this cameras or? I want to, uh, I'm going to form a small committee to meet with you and the mayor regarding the cameras before we, uh, discuss this. And then anybody individually that wants to talk to you, that's fine.
No problem.
Is that it, Joe?
Yes, thank you.
I have a few things. One, uh, Monday night, if everybody looks at their sheets for boards and commissions, we have some expired, some need to be replaced. So we'll be doing that Monday night. Uh, I'd like to go out and get some pricing on, me and, uh, Mr. Catroche met out on Darn Street. There was a fence that was moved and we want to extend some pocket parking along Darn Street. If you go down, Darn's on your left. So I want to get a price from, uh, maybe Amanda, we can meet out there. It's not a big deal, some blacktop and see we get some pricing on doing that. But I want to try to get it done as soon as possible because it's just going to be a mud pit and, uh, come this summer. Do you want to update us on the wharf stack renovations and the handicap curbs and the old Route thirteen Culver project? Just give us a brief.
Yeah, I'll just give you guys kind of a, just a brief overview to start off on kind of the grants that we've been, um, working on and applying for. Um, just last week, we submitted, um, an application through the PennDOT multimodal grant program, um, and that was to upgrade a significant amount of ADA curb ramps, uh, throughout the borough. So that'll hopefully be a decent match for CDBD application, which is through the county. Um, so matching state and county, um, to upgrade, um, a, a large amount of ADA curb ramps. Um, and then next week, we will be hopefully submitting a grant application for, um, a, a DCNR C2P2 grant, which is, um, community planning. So we'll be applying for, um, completing a master plan for the whole waterfront and, um, parking area. Um, so that'll be kind of a, a large undertaking. So we thought the best way to go about that was to, um, kind of start to develop a, a master site plan before going forward with any sort of, um, you know, construction or development on that. So, um, that might be in your packets for next week. Um, and then just to give an update again, going back to ADA curb ramps, um, but we will hopefully be putting out to bid, um, two intersections this year. So, um, provided that they, you know, fit within the budget, hopefully they'll be completed as well this summer. Um, and-
Amanda, two intersections. Does that mean four?
I think there's, yeah, there are, each, each intersection should have four, so, um, eight total. Yeah, and just to give you a quick update too, there's been, uh, we've been working quite a bit with Mr. Dillon on, um, the old Route thirteen bridge, which, um, has a Conrail rail line going across it too, crossing over Otter Creek. Um, so currently, um, with the state, the bridge is owned by the borough and Bristol Township. Um, we have done some research and found that we really can't tie that back to either municipality. It kind of actually looks like Conrail still owns that bridge. We've been working with the Pennsylvania Utility Commission to kind of sort through that and resolve, um, who the exact ownership of the bridge is. But in the meantime, PennDOT has identified a few items that need to be, um, repaired and maintained on the bridge and, and in the surrounding areas. So it looks like at this point, we're going to need to, um, do something, and we're hoping that, um, Bristol Township and Conrail will kind of help us out and, and get on board with this solution. Um, it does require some upfront engineering to even determine what needs to be done at this point. So PennDOT has identified, um, scour protection, so around the piers and abutments for the bridge to keep, um, you know, erosion from happening, removing some of the sediment within the creek, um, and also installing a guide rail going across the bridge. So those three main things, um, we're going to need to look at and do some upfront engineering, but there are, um, there is a bit of cost, probably about fifteen hundred dollars involved with just, you know, finding out what needs to be done at this point and, and how much it's going to cost to repair those. So.
Has Green Lane been looked into as well?
What, uh, the bridge going?
Yeah.
Um, PennDOT does inspect every bridge, um, every two years. So I don't know if that-
Like from what?
That one might be owned by the railroad. So they would, they would get a copy of that report.
Tell you now, this is money State Senator Tomlinson got us, like five hundred and seventy-five thousand or five fifty, five seventy-five, somewhere around there to do, you know, start this project. And we got money from the county open space program. So we're going to put on the agenda to authorize the engineers start to proceed this. There'll be a proposal in your packet for Monday, but the money will come out of the county open space money and the money we got from Tomlinson to get this project started.
Do we have that money banked in the amendment? More of it will be necessary as well?
Right. So that, that's the Maple Beach Bridge. That's kind of near Public Works. Um, this is the old Route thirteen bridge, which crosses when you're coming into the borough, um, over Otter Creek.
This is the upper bridge.
By Roman Horse.
They did the lower bridge a few years back.
Yeah, they had, PennDOT replaced Otter Street Bridge a couple of years ago, but this is-
But this is old thirteen. This is the upper one, so.
Right. And, yeah, exactly.
But we have money from them to get this project started for engineering.
The Otter, Otter Creek, the new bridge is the money we got from Tomlinson and County Open Space. This is a, um, this is the, uh, old Route thirteen Culver that, uh-
Right, there's two-
We have highway, two, two separate issues.
Right. So, yeah, we have, we have two, the two grants, the two funding for, um, Maple Beach Bridge.
Right.
So are we going to do anything with that bridge until we, with the determined ownership or, pretty, um, the old thirteen bridge? It could be possibly owned by us, the township and, uh-
Right. So, um, the Pennsylvania Utility Commission is recommending at this point that at least to address as a whole between the three parties to kind of collaborate and get the necessary items completed at this point until determinate, determination is made.
I, I have an odd question related to that, and I know we dealt with it before and I don't remember the outcome. The advertisements all over that bridge? Who, who sells them?
Other bridge.
The one where they get the Mill Creek or the Creek?
Bridge.
Below it?
Yes.
Okay.
Scrapyard.
Sorry. I got it. My bad. I got to brush up on my bridges.
Amanda.
Don't really look like a bridge.
I'm like it. We don't know.
Lou or Tony to Tridresher issue. Notwithstanding the issue, who owns the bridge, the roadway is still our responsibility, right? So we pave to the center Bristol Township. So even there may be a question, who owns underneath? We still responsible for that. But PUC is kind of saying, listen, guys, we don't care what you decide. We need these things done and we'd like the three of you to get together and split the cost. Now, we also are talking to Conrail about possibly abandoning that line for possible use as a trailway at some point. So we're trying to work with them and the township with this. So we're looking at the long range benefits, but this is the short term. Certain things need to be done. PennDOT replaced the one below it on Otter Street, but, and I don't think they necessarily should have done that, but they did it. But they're not doing this one. So. All right?
Any other questions?
Bring a diagram.
All right. Just to update everybody on the, the pier, the dock, let's, the structure down at the wharf is almost complete. The borough guys did an outstanding job on renovating that project. I mean, it started out with, you know, replacing the walls and then the inside was rotted and then the ceiling was rotted and we took down the, they had like chicken wire underneath and they put AZAC underneath. So they're almost done. And, you know, John Driscoll and the borough workers did an outstanding job on that project, saved this borough. When I tell you a couple hundred thousand dollars, there's no question. So when we discussed this as a council, I don't know, six months ago when they started this, you know, they're in the home stretch. The only thing they don't want to do is paint it because there's a lot of painting involved. So we're going to see if we can get some pricing on painting and, uh, I'll bring it back to council. If there's anybody in town wants to put a price in on painting that, that area at day rate or something, get in touch with the manager. But, uh, they did it, they would have started out as a small project, ended up as a total renovation, but they really did a great job. And it was all done in-house. Any questions on that? Tony?
I, I'm down here quite often and see that night all, all lighted, all lit up and everything looks beautiful. Um, are we going to cap in the, the post?
They ordered a new post. That's what I'm saying. Every time they got into something, they did, something else came up. So, you know, it started out just replacing the outer part, then they did the inner part, then they did the ceiling. But they've been working on it, you know?
Yeah, that looks really, really good. I'm, I'm down here all the time.
I mean, I, I got to give Driscoll, you know, I mean, I'm around carpenter work every day and he did an outstanding job.
Yeah, it looks good.
As a borough employee, I mean, he could work for anybody, that guy. So they all did, but, I mean, he led that project and, you know, he really did a nice job. They ordered new columns. First, they were going to try to build them and, but they ordered something to simulate what was there. Any other questions or comments on the wharf? Jim, what do you have?
Uh, just what's listed, uh, ratified, a professional services agreement with Pickering Courts in Somerset to inspect the underwater docks here in Wharf. And it cost a thirteen thousand, one hundred dollars. Ratify the agreement with urban engineers for dock inspection per the letter dated March thirteenth, not to exceed eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. I'll also put on the Gilmore's proposal to do the design for the Otter Creek Bridge. That'll be in your packet, uh, Friday. And, uh, I guess that's it.
Mr. Salerno, you have anything? Tony?
Yeah, just before we adjourn, I forgot there was something, but I want to finish. Uh, there's a, a Bristol resident wanted me to, uh, talk to council about a, a community day event down at the basketball courts that wouldn't cost, you know, said wouldn't cost the council money, I mean, the borough any money. Just needed to, to figure out what needs to happen for the council. He said there, he's in the entertainment business. So he said there'll be music, the, uh, bounce house for kids, basketball games. You're going to have some, you know, some people come out there for the games and, you know, and everybody, just like kind of the elementary schools when they have their little dances or whatever. The only thing that they want to see is people bring some donations for the less, you know, for the needy in the, in the area, just as a, a way to give back to the community. But, um, he wants it, he, he has flyers made up and scheduled for like Saturday, May, I want to say sixteenth, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. It's a Saturday. But I just want to know, what is, what is the process of, what do we have to do?
To the nonprofit organization?
Yes, mhm.
Well, I guess he's got to come in and meet with the manager and Merle. Merle sets up most of the events.
Okay.
So he's going to have to email the borough and-
I'll get, Merle, I'll get your information, then I'll send it to him.
Just see Carol and have her give him an application.
Okay. So how about the time, time, the timeline itself? How quick does it move? He wants to-
He had to have her check the calendar.
Uh huh.
Uh, he, he needed insurance, point harmless, and standard other stuff, traffic up.
Okay.
Or body.
Okay. All right, got you. All right, that's it. So I have, thanks.
So is there anything on Monday's agenda that we need to meet for?
What we discussed here?
Could be done now or?
Except for Bill Miller game on.
On the chief's proposal?
No, I ain't worried about that. There's nothing that needs to be voted on Monday? No, I ain't worried about that. There's nothing that needs to be voted on Monday?
Just if you want to vote on these things tonight, then we don't have to meet Monday.
So, great.
Hiring Joseph Dragon as a part-time police officer, approve and authorize the signing of the amended continuing disclosure agreement with the Delaware Valley Regional Financing Authority, ratified the two agreements and I hope you want to proceed and authorize the, the chief's proposal.
Do you guys want to do that now, not meet Monday, or you want to?
I'd rather meet Monday, so we can, I mean, I still have a question, what is the chief about? And you want to form a committee for something, didn't you?
I don't need to have a meeting. You could talk to the chief after the meeting.
Alright.
What's everybody want to do? You're saying do it now?
Tonight, please.
It's okay with me to.
Suspend the rules?
I guess we just need to make sure we know which.
Okay, so, we need somebody to suspend the rules, is that what?
So you want, so you got number two, three?
Two, three, four. Four?
Wait a minute. What numbers are we looking for? Two?
I think we-
Two, three, four, five, and six.
Say it again, say it again.
Two, three, four, five, and six.
Two, three, four, five, and six. Two.
Do we make a motion to suspend the rules or do we?
Right, suspend the rules.
Okay, like make a motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the implementation of Chief Henry's March 19th, 2018 memorandum on capital projects totaling $32,000 and, $32,095.
By the second, by Miss Collins, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
The only question I have is, this is, this is something that's already put aside, so.
The budget. The only thing, chief, I would like to do is be, we're going to vote on it tonight, but I don't want you to authorize that without a meeting.
No problem. This is, the council knows, there's three projects in there, it's not-
Right.
But yeah, no problem, we won't move until we talk to the council and get their blessing.
We're all in agreement with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the professional services agreement with Pickering Courts and Somerson to inspect underwater docks here Wharf at a cost of $13,100.
By the second.
Second.
By Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the agreement with urban engineers for dock inspection per letter dated March 13th, 2018, in an amount not to exceed $11,500.
By the second. Catroci, questions or comments? Mr. Devine?
Yeah, I mean, the only comment I have is, is this something that we should, I mean, we're talking about the docks and people get excited about the docks. Is that something that we want to share why we're, what we're doing?
Already discussed in the executive session, remember?
Yeah, executive session, yes, but it's not-
We got to vote to spend the money.
Yeah, 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 I understand. I'm talking about just the, the public itself. Is that something that-
Inspect it.
Say it again?
Them inspected.
Okay.
We discussed all this, remember?
No, no, I understand. I'm talking about as the public itself, because I'm sure they're going to have questions of why are we getting our, you know, getting the Wharf inspected.
Sure, they were hit by ice, we want to make sure they're safe.
There you go, that's all I want to know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve and authorize signing the amendment continuing disclosure agreement between Borough and Delaware Valley Regional Financial Authority.
Seconded by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the hiring of Joseph Dragon as a part-time police officer.
ratified by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.